Could we please have the roll?
Thank you. Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Gould?
I'm here.
Trustee Levinson?
Here.
Trustee Rosner?
Yeah.
President Torby?
Here.
Thank you. I just wanted to announce also with us tonight is our new deputy clerk Chanel Smith, so we welcome her to the Board of Trustees meeting. Welcome! Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Oh Public Meetings Act. In addition, notice of this meeting has been posted in Village Hall on the website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken at tonight's special meeting.
Thank you. We have our one resolution to go into executive session.
Thank you. This resolution authorizes an executive session at the March 11, 2013 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, we have a number of items: volunteer applications for the Environmental Commission and Historic Preservation Commission, salary ordinance and merit pay, Maryland, Occidental litigation, lease of office space to contract negotiation, and third and Valley redevelopment.
Move.
Okay, move by trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Davis Ford. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll reconvene back here for our public session at 8:00 PM sharp. Thank you. We have our one resolution to go into executive session.
Thank you. This resolution authorizes an executive session at the March 11, 2013 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, we have a number of items: volunteer applications for the Environmental Commission and Historic Preservation Commission, salary ordinance and merit pay, Maryland, Occidental litigation, lease of office space to contract negotiation, and third and Valley redevelopment.
Move.
Okay, move by trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Davis Ford. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll reconvene back here for our public session at 8:00 PM sharp.
Okay, thank you everybody. I'd like to reconvene our public session of the Board of Trustees Special Meeting. Could we have the roll please?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Bauer.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Gould.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Here.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
President Torpe.
Here.
Thank you.
Everybody please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing. Thank you. Okay, just a couple announcements to start. I just want to make sure to remind everybody that a week from tonight is the annual State of the Village dress. So please join my colleagues here on the board with other local county state leaders to recap the progress that we made in town here in 2012 and the priorities for this year. Any member of the public is invited to attend. You can also watch online on our website at SouthOrange.org. And if you are interested in attending, the seating is limited. We're trying to get a sense of how many people are coming. So if you could email Cathy Cameron at C Cameron at SouthOrange.org, that would be great. And we're really excited to be able to do this again. So if anybody is interested, there was a preview in the last edition of the Gaslight. And if you want to learn more, the address will be posted on the website afterwards as well. The World Wildlife Foundation's 2013 Earth Hour is Saturday, March 23rd at 8:30 PM. Millions of people across the world will turn off their lights for one hour on the same night on this symbolic show of support to focus more attention on sustainability, energy policy, and what we need to do to protect our planet. So we're going to be switching off our lights and we ask you to do the same for yours. And if you want to learn a little bit more about that, you can go to WorldWildlife.org/EarthHour. And the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, which would have been scheduled for March 25th in observance of Passover, will be rescheduled to Wednesday, March 28th. And the public session.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seventh, thank you. At 8:00 PM, the public session will begin at 8:00 PM. And we wish everybody who is celebrating a wonderful Passover. We have a special guest tonight from the Board of Education to talk about the 2013-2014 Board of Education budget. So I'd like to introduce Beth Darty, the President of the Board of Ed.
Thank you, President Torpe. With me, Dr. Brian Osborne and Cheryl Snyder, the Business Administrator. Dr. Osborne is the Superintendent. So thank you for allowing me to come here tonight to present the budget for the 2013-14 school year. A request was made. We had a workshop with the Board of School Estimates back in January where we discussed the fact that the Board of Education has moved its election to November. Significant change there for the Board of School Estimate is now the Board of Ed is the one that has the ultimate authority to raise the tax levy for the operating budget. We will still come to the Board of School Estimate for any bonding which would impact debt service. So the public hearing, we will be the ones to hold the public hearing. That'll be on Thursday, March 21st, where we take the final action. Monday, the 4th of March, we passed our preliminary budget for the purpose of advertising and just submitted to the county superintendent for review to make sure it met all the statutory requirements. So quickly I'll go over our proposed revenue and expenses. We had a budget gap based on those proposals and then the adjustments that we had to do in both personnel and non-personnel areas to reach a tax levy and talk about the banked cap that we've received over the past several years and what we're using this year. So if you turn to the second page, the top slide on the second page. The revenue proposed for this budget, we have the operating, well, it's now, the preliminary budget is approved. The operating budget, the local tax levy of $104,473,642. Our state aid remained flat, which is what our budgeting had been based on at $4,75,898. We had a fund balance which is coming from last year's budget to be used in next year's budget of $2,152,272. Some of this was realized, we had a very warm winter last year, which is very fortunate. We had a lot of savings in our energy costs. We also got reimbursed, insurance reimbursement from effects of Hurricane Irene. So when we spent money that year was with the understanding that if we did get the reimbursement from insurance, it would go into the budget in future years. And we also had significant savings from health premium benefits that we negotiated in Alaska around with our teachers' contract where in addition to contributing the 1.5% of salary, they also paid up for any plan that they purchased in excess of Direct 15. Direct 15 was the base and if they purchased a more expensive plan, they paid the incremental difference in premium. That had not yet been negotiated at the time when the budget was made. So realizing those savings, we were able to put that back into the budget for 13 and 14 to offset some of the cuts, which is very helpful. We have debt service that we have to raise taxes for, $4,123,451. And then the next line it says state federal aid is $2,549,881. This represents only 75% of the funding at the federal level. We were told to budget anticipating 25% loss of federal aid. This has to do with the sequestration. And then capital outlay, this is really just a transfer among funds. It's not additional tax levy. It's transferring money from our capital reserve to the operating budget for capital outlay to renovate a tech lab at Maplewood Middle School, as well as to install emergency generators at Columbia High School. And this will leave some money in our capital reserve fund to do a similar renovation at the tech lab at South Orange Middle School in the future. And both of those tech lab renovations have grants from the state associated with them at, for about 40% of the construction costs. So we will expect to see that, some of that on a reimbursement basis. The expenses for 13 and 14 salaries, $60,758,174. Health and dental expense, $13,211,612. You'll see that that's an increase of about 9.5%. Overall, they go up close to 20%. So that percent increase is just for the 2014 portion of our school year because the first half of our school year is 2013 rates. So that increase is just for the second half of the year. On a yearly basis, it's in the low twenties for percentage increase of health premiums. Tuition expenses, this is out of district tuition for special needs students, it's gone up to $10,644,458. This also represents a 10% increase over this current year. Our energy expenses are just going up a small amount, about less than $30,000. Transportation expense around $20,000. And then other required expenses, $286,493. This includes all of our contracted services like our custodians, our security forces, our lunch aids. It also is special aid related services, insurance expenses which have gone up as a result of Hurricane Sandy. And then we have variable expenses. So the required expenses are things that are nondiscretionary. We're already locked into having to pay these. We really, we don't have any choice. The variable expenses are where we have some flexibility in the classroom for student expenses, textbooks, technology, professional development, and other things like library expenses that fall into the other variable expenses. So in order to, we ended up having a $2.8 million budget gap. And so to reduce, to close that gap, we revised our budget assumptions, the wish lists of what we really wanted to have going forward by $860,000. We reduced non-personnel budget reductions by $365,000. And then personnel budget reductions, that's actually reductions in staff to the tune of about $1.6 million. And if you turn the page, you'll see outlined what our personnel adjustments were or are. We've actually added five positions and decreased 19 positions, so the net change is minus 14. We've added two positions at the elementary school due to growing enrollment. Two positions at the middle school for world language in sixth grade. This is a requirement of, we're implementing the International Baccalaureate System beginning in the fall in sixth grade. And the requirement is to have world languages in every grade for the International Baccalaureate. We're also adding one elementary social worker that will be split between the schools that don't currently have a dedicated social worker. And then where we're reducing, we've got the central office secretary. It's currently a vacant position. It became vacated recently and we did not fill that in anticipation of these reductions. Three FTEs at Columbia High School teaching staff. This is due to schedule efficiencies, really looking at the master schedule and where we can schedule the students most efficiently within the current class size policy. Reduction of a Columbia High School dean as well as student assistance counselor. The dean, one of the deans will be retiring, so we won't actually have to remove someone from their position. We just won't fill it. So that's the reduction of the dean. And we've got the three elementary specials. Specials are art, music, phys ed, health, or library. And through efficient scheduling, without change in class size, we think that we can eliminate three of those special positions across the schools because right now the teachers go between the schools and service multiple schools. We also have special education teaching staff reduction. This is district-wide K to 12 of six teachers. We are working currently with the District Management Council. It's a firm we've hired to really help us look for efficiencies in our special education program. They've also helped us with a K to 2 reading intervention program. When they did an analysis, they realized that a large percentage of the children that were classified in the early grades, it was due to reading issues and that if we implement this K to 2 reading intervention, we actually can take care of a lot of those issues and result in less children being classified. So it's a combination of efficiencies throughout the system as well as less children needing to be classified in the early grades due to this targeted reading intervention. This current year is the first year we've implemented that intervention program. And then we have our two curriculum specialists. That's one language arts specialist and one math specialist that serviced the district K to 5. They did fabulous work. This is by no means a reflection on their work. We just have to find a way to continue going forward with less. So we're replacing it with subject matter, subject master teachers in each elementary school, a language arts and a math specialist at a stipended position. So it'll be teachers that are currently in the schools that receive a stipend to help with curriculum development and providing role models in model classrooms for other teachers in their school. So the preliminary budget also includes $475,000 of an adjustment we received this year from the state. We receive adjustments for increased enrollment as well as healthcare premiums going up at an escalating rate. We will use this $475,000 of the adjustment to purchase technology. The park assessments, which are a statewide assessment that we will be required to implement, not this coming year, but in 14-15. It's going to be online testing. So we are purchasing the equipment for next year so that we have a year to become familiar with it before all the students have to use this technology for the testing and the teachers will know how to implement the test. It also, in that year, will be able, it'll move us closer to one-to-one computing, which we've got really good reports from some pilot programs in the district where the student learning, the kids are just phenomenally excited to have, you know, their own personal device to use in the classroom. So while these Chromebooks is possibly what we're purchasing, the kids will be able to use them actually for learning as opposed to just testing in that first year before we have to really dedicate them to testing. So looking at the banked cap, over the last three years, if you include the adjustment that we're using this year, we have received about $2.4 million in adjustments from the state, recognizing that our costs are escalating at a far greater rate than a 2% cap will allow us to maintain a valid educational system. This is the first time we have used any of that adjustment. We have to use money from this year's adjustment before we can begin to use banked cap. The first year that we got an adjustment, 2011 and 12, that money will expire for the 14-15 budget. So no money is expiring yet. We still have one more year before the first amount of money will expire. So we're only using about 20% of the adjustments. We're using the 475 out of the 2.4 million. And then the final slide, well, not the final, but one at the bottom of page five, shows our five-year budget projections. This is assuming a 2% operating tax cap going forward after this year where we use the adjustment. And you'll see that next year, we anticipate another deficit of $2.8 million. Then it increases to $5.4 million, then $8.4 million, then $12.48 million, then a $17.4 million budget gap in five years, which is staggering. So we clearly need to figure out something different because we cannot cut our way in a sustainable manner and still provide the quality education for our students at this pace. So this is one thing that kind of caused us to get to the point where we needed to use some of our banked adjustments from the state that we couldn't keep our operating budget right at 2%. So if you turn over to the very last page, the operating budget tax impact will be 2.47%. This is, you know, over the 2% cap but well within the adjustments that we've been allowed. Our debt service is going up this year relative to last year and that increase in debt service will take the overall, the all-in tax impact to 2.93%. And if you look at the little box below that, that shows that the tax impact on the average assessed household for South Orange will be $212 per assessed, per 100 of assessed value. And the incremental difference going up from 2% to 2.4% for South Orange, that was $21 for $100 of assessed value. So, any questions?
Yes. Wanted to get back to the sequester.
Mm-hmm.
Could you just elaborate very simply how that impacts in dollars to your budget? What is the impact?
It was about half a million, right? About $500,000 roughly?
Yeah.
That was the 25%. We got roughly, a little under $2 million. We got roughly, a little under two million in federal aid, and now we're getting around one-point-five million, so we lost about five hundred. And that's just embedded in all, overall in our cuts.
And if this is resolved, is there any opportunity to recover that, or is it just?
We won't have the, the final federal numbers until May, after we have to do the tax levy. So I think if it's resolved, then it would probably be reflected in fund balance for next year to offset tax, if we got more than we expected.
It would show up in the adjusted budget.
It would show up in the adjusted budget, right, as revenue.
Thank you. And the other question I had was on tuition expense. Can you explain that again to me in a little bit more detail?
Sure. So when students, when students are classified and they have an IEP, an individualized education program, that mandates the educational services that we have to provide to the students. And we are, make every effort to provide those services in district, but sometimes due to the needs of the child, we just can't, in which case we have to send them out of district. That's, so it's OOD is the, you see tuition. And those facilities unfortunately are not capped at a two percent increase. You can see that though, that tuition increases at about ten percent a year, and it's really, it's hard to predict because it really depends on the nature of the, the children and what their needs are and how expensive the institution they're going to. We do have a lot of efforts to try to provide the services as much as we can for the students in our district. We've hired Effective School Solutions, which is a company that's providing some wraparound services in our district to help us keep some of our kids here. I mean, it's better for them if we can provide the services here in their home district also, and also just economically it makes sense.
Thank you. That was informative, but I'm just looking at the number, ten-point-six million?
Yes.
And so how many students is that? Just a guesstimate.
About a hundred and ninety.
All right, so it's ten-point-six million to address their educational needs for about a hundred and twenty students.
And that doesn't include transportation.
Hundred and ninety.
One hundred and ninety students, right. And that it does not include transportation expenses, which would be incorporated in the line below, transportation expense. Here, I'm going to let Ms. Schneider, Business Administrator, handle the details.
It does actually include some other tuitions as well. We have some students who go to charter schools that we're required to pay for, as well as students who go to vocational schools. So it's not strictly special ed students, but there are just over a hundred and ninety students going to out-of-district placements for special ed specifically.
Now I'm a little confused. I, I, this tuition is for students who have special needs and cannot be accommodated, but you said charter schools, so.
And charter schools. It's all tuition that we pay to other facilities.
So why would we be paying, and believe me, because I'm totally uninformed, why would we be paying tuition for students to go to a charter school?
Because we're required, if someone goes to a charter school, since they're also getting a public education there, we're required to pay their tuition. We get billed through the state.
All right. I thought, and again, pardon my ignorance on this, do, we don't have a charter school in Maplewood or South Orange, right? And the first, the students going to a charter school that we're required to pay their tuition for, they don't have any handicaps or disabilities. They just made a, a, a choice to, wow.
That's correct. When somebody opens a charter school, if someone had opened one in South Orange, for instance, the first students who are allowed to opt into it would have to come from Maplewood, South Orange, since it's located here.
That I understood.
If those spaces are not filled, then they could go outside of the region where the charter school is. These are people who live in South Orange, Maplewood, who have chosen to go to fill those spaces in other charter schools, and we're required to pay for them.
And, and again, I won't hold you to this, just off the top of your head, how many residents, students go to charter schools?
The number that we were given for next year is either eighteen or nineteen, and then there's a calculation based on their needs that the state gives us to tell us how much to budget for that.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
I have some questions.
Okay. Cheryl, let's go down.
Just, just following up on Trustee Davis Ford's question, and obviously eighteen to nineteen at a charter school is going to be much less than this, so I realize there's a range, but for the anticipated twenty-thirteen, fourteen budget at ten-point-six million, that's about fifty-five thousand dollars a year for those hundred and ninety students. It does include transportation. So does that mean that the transportation line item, two, two items down, does not include the transportation included within the ten-point-six million?
The tuition does not include transportation. So that transportation line includes both out-of-district transportation, as well as the transportation we do within the district. It also includes students who go to non-public schools that get either transported to those schools or aid and lula transportation.
Can you, and obviously you don't have to do this now, but could you send over some info as to your, the breakdown of your transportation expense, that is parochial, what were the three things you just said?
None.
Oh, out-of-district and in-district.
Sure, we can get that figured out.
Yeah, okay. And with respect to the transportation expense, at four-point-six million, in case anybody's listening, four-point-six-seven-five, so almost four-point-seven million dollars, how much of that relates to, how much of the in-district figure within that relates to the K to six, no, K to five blessing?
I would have to get you those figures. I don't have it broken down that way. It, it's hard to break it down that way because we do tiered busing, where a bus that's going to K through five, then will go to the high school, for instance, so it's all kind of intertwined, but I could give you some sort of breakdown to give you an idea.
I would appreciate that, and I think I've asked you for this in the past, and it's probably my fault that I haven't followed up, but does the district have a map, sort of a GIS or something? I realize that you, you chain your trips, and that's very efficient. I'm sure you do everything as efficiently as possible because I've talked to you about that in the past, but I'd like to see graphically, you know, what, not what bus in particular, but you know, what, what happens every morning and afternoon, because I'm curious to understand this better. I think if we had more neighborhood schools, just so you know where I'm coming from, we would spend a lot less money on transportation. It seems like it could turn into a low-hanging fruit, and when I see that incredibly scary chart of seventeen-point-four million, I'm thinking to myself, everybody wants kids walking to school, everybody wants, you know, obesity to go down. You know, we, we do have a regional school district, but on the other hand, we have some, a lot of schools in some very compact communities, and it seems like this is one of the places where you should examine restructuring. So I'd like to work with you on that.
Okay. Thank you. We'll get you some information on that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? And then most of my questions were answered by those. Okay.
Oh, I have one more question. I'm sorry. How about the, the IB program in the middle school, is one of the languages you're going to be offering, can we say yes, Chinese?
I do not think that's.
No, not next year. We are looking at, we're revisiting world languages and coming up with a multi-year plan that may involve some changes, but right now, we're just adding a world language that is going to be Spanish to sixth grade so that we have three full years of world language in the middle schools.
Okay, so within the IB program, that the only, that the language is going to be Spanish?
The language is going to be Spanish next year, that's right.
Okay. If I can make a suggestion, because I've seen this done in other schools, if there's a desire to ramp up to adding Chinese someday, which I hope there is.
Mandarin.
Mandarin, okay. Then you might start with an after-school, you know, enrichment kind of program so that, you know, children who are interested in that could at least have some exposure to it? And then branch into it?
Or might even partner with YouthNet. That might be a good way to do it, but I think that makes sense. And then you can see if there's really some justification, because I, I, I believe I understand the heavy lifting it, it would take as far as cost and infrastructure to put something like that in place. I'm not an educator, I'm just using, you know, common sense, and that may be, to piggyback on Trustee Bauer, it may be an easy way to go. Maybe there's not that, that much of a demand or interest in Mandarin to justify that exercise, and a good way to test the waters would be an after-school program.
Yeah, that's, that's actually a great suggestion. We will bring it back and kick it around and see what we could do in terms of identifying somebody who would teach it and a cost structure for that. We have been, as you probably have noticed in local press, we've been adding quite a bit to our extracurricular activities, especially for our middle school kids, but not only for our elementary school kids as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming. Don't ignore us in, in the future. This was really, really informative, and since sixty percent of our taxes go to the school system, we need you to come visit us on a more regular basis.
So I'll just repeat one more time, the public hearing to the Board of Ed for the tax levy is Thursday, the twenty-first of March.
And if people are interested in, for example, like these slides, are they available online?
Online on the district website, which is SOMSD.k12 nj.us.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the meeting for public comments. Seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments and move on to ordinances on second reading.
Thank you. We have two ordinances tonight for second reading. The first ordinance, two thousand thirteen zero three. This is an ordinance to amend the code of the township of South Orange Village, section one-thirty dash forty-nine, to provide for special assessments for non-recurring costs incurred by the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties.
So Lewis, is there anything you'd like to say about this? My understanding, these, the two ordinances tonight are kind of the sister ordinances for the joint meeting.
Right, the first one, two thousand thirteen oh three, amends the code to allow us to levy special assessments, and then two thousand thirteen oh four actually levies to twenty-five dollars. And just for anyone out there listening, as we discussed before, this is a result of the Occidental litigation. The joint meeting has incurred pretty extraordinary expenses with that, as a result of which their bill to us has gone up, so we have to recoup it. But because we are hopeful that this litigation will at some point get resolved, and this isn't part of the regular recurring operating expenses of the sewer system, we thought it more appropriate to identify it as simply as a special assessment so that it can be easily deleted once those extraordinary expenses go away.
So the idea is hopefully, if anything, this is just a one-time.
Right, of limited duration and wouldn't just be rolled into the rate forevermore.
Thank you.
And perhaps Trustee Levinson would like to encourage people to go online and make their voices heard.
And sign a petition on NJSpillActBill.com. There is a petition out there. We only have seventy-five signatures to date. We need many, many more.
At this time, I'd like to open up this ordinance for the public hearing portion. If there's any members of the public who wish to comment on this ordinance, seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to comment on this ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing. And unless there's any further questions from the board, can we have a motion?
Move.
Move by Trustee Levinson.
Second.
And seconded by Trustee Bauer. Can we have a roll call, please?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance two thousand thirteen dash zero three has been adopted upon second reading. The second ordinance tonight, two thousand thirteen dash zero four, this is an ordinance to authorize a special assessment of twenty-five dollars for each equivalent dwelling unit pursuant to the amended section one-thirty dash forty-nine of the village code, to provide for special assessments for non-recurring costs incurred by the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties in defending certain litigation.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up this ordinance for public hearing. And seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to comment on this ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing, and unless there's any questions or comments from the board, can we have a motion?
I move.
Move by Trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Davis Ford. Can we have the roll, please?
I, I have a question. If either Trustee Levinson or Barry could explain, mostly for the public's benefit, but for mine as well, what is an equivalent dwelling unit?
It's a formula, it's fairly commonly done. Essentially, it's one single-family house is one EDU, one equivalent dwelling unit, and then when you have multifamily, or if you have commercial, it's based on gallonage, and it's a way to kind of equate everything to one common measure.
Each type, each type of property has a, restaurants has an assigned number of units.
Goes by gallonage?
Largely, it's driven.
With square feet, too.
We don't measure.
Number seating positions.
Project based on what the average usage of that type of building.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Okay, can we have the roll, please?
Thank you. We'll start with Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Thank you. So ordinance two thousand thirteen dash zero four has been adopted.
Thank you. And we do also have four resolutions this evening?
Yes. Tonight, there are four resolutions. The first is a resolution authorizing settlement of litigation entitled New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection versus Occidental Chemical Corporation. This is in accordance with the terms of a proposed consent judgment and related documents.
Okay, are we going to do all these as a consent agenda?
They're all on a consent agenda. We have a resolution awarding a competitive contract to Geordano Company for the purchase and processing of recycle, recyclable material collected from the township of South Orange Village. A resolution awarding a competitive contract to Pat Scanlon Landscaping for alternate bid number one through five listed in the bid specifications for the mowing of large turf areas within the township of South Orange Village. This will be for calendar year two thousand thirteen in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. And lastly, we have a resolution awarding a contract to D'Onofrio and Son for the mowing of large turf areas in the township of South Orange Village, also for calendar year two thousand thirteen in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty cents.
Thank you. Are there any questions on any of these resolutions?
I have a question on the resolution awarding a competitive contract to Geordano for picking up the recyclables. Can you explain what the hundred percent figures are for mixed newspaper and corrugated cardboard, and explain how the floor price works for, I assume, the newspaper and the cardboard? I understand the, I understand the, I understand the bids, I understand why Geordano was chosen, I don't have any problem with the resolution. I understand that fifty-eight dollars is the proposal, and that single stream is the largest segment of our recyclable materials, but I didn't understand the chart with respect to those two figures and the floor prices, I mean, the floor.
The floor prices are, the floor prices are the minimum that we will get for that tonnage. We, we do have.
That tonnage meaning the item above it?
Right.
Okay.
But we as well have saw separated at the yard, so we, we can dispose of cardboard or co-mingled as well, which is a different commodity price.
And the, the percentage that they were asked to bid on is based on a, it's some index that's industry-generated daily, weekly, I don't know, it fluctuates.
Yeah, it's a market price.
And so they were asked to bid what percentage of that market price, based on a certain specified index, they would pay us, and then to provide a bottom floor price that it would never drop below that, regardless of what that index does. And so the, the floor price for each of the commodities listed below the percentages, the percentages, so it can go higher depending on where that index goes, but it can never go lower than the floor price.
Okay, I understand it won't go lower than the floor price, but what does the hundred percent represent for newspaper and cardboard?
That's hundred percent of this published index industry rate, which.
What of the market prices?
Okay.
It's a, and it's tied to a specific published market rate.
Okay. All right.
Just as a side comment, Tommy has indicated that we're about thirty percent higher now than we were previously in recyclables.
Overall?
Yeah, our overall tonnage is up significantly with the implementation.
Which, which we anticipated.
We projected twenty percent.
So are we making money?
Making, it's all of it.
It's too early to tell?
No, no, it's not costing us anything more.
No, and in fact, with the increased tonnage and with this price, which is higher than our expiring contract, we'd be bringing in, I think it's twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a year more revenue.
Right. And as long as the governor doesn't rip us off in the grant side, which is some legislation which is being passed right now.
So we need to move on?
There's a resolution that, that's hopefully will come up saying that we oppose what the governor is doing.
Yeah. I, I wasn't even there yet, I was just saying, so we need to move now on allowing people who are doing such a great job recycling in this community to reduce their garbage disposal costs.
Well, we've done the first step.
Okay.
They, because they've now offered three different pricing schemes.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, and again.
Well, how do you find out about that? I'm a customer, they need to notify me.
They were, they were supposed to have sent. They were supposed to have sent a notice.
They did.
I know, I know.
Did I notice? I didn't get a notice.
No, it's April 1st.
I didn't get a notice.
It's on their website, we announced it here.
Okay.
I actually posted it on MOL.
Right, okay.
It's on their website, South Orange Disposal's website. It's going to be included in their bills, I guess it has not gone out yet.
As of April 1st.
And it basically, there's the, what has been the traditional twice-a-week, three containers, I guess it is, then there's a once-a-week, three containers, or once-a-week, one container?
Once-a-week, one container. Once-a-week, two containers. Twice-a-week, two containers.
In the container, can you put as many bags as you can fit?
Yeah.
It's still not a per bag?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's great.
Progress.
And so it's 24th, 28th, and 35th.
We gotta advertise them all. All right, thank you very much.
I have a question on 56 and 57, and they're simple questions. For the mowing of large turf areas, they're both, why do we have two resolutions or contracts to do the same process? Is it dividing the areas up separately?
Now, the one is large turf, which is the fields, and the other is, I think it's referred to as landscaping.
They both say large turf.
I can provide some clarification. South Orange is only interested in the bidding part of those five alternatives, which includes hanging baskets and other sorts of downtown planters and containers. Maplewood and the South Orange School District was not interested as a joint bid in those particular alternative items, one through five.
We are the lead agency for the bid, right? Barry?
Pardon me?
We're the lead agency for the bid.
Yes, and I'm trying to look quickly.
It's a shared service bid.
Oh, yeah, I understood that, but why?
Technically, it was one big proposal referred to generically as large turf areas. Within that, there were certain alternates that we were allowed to pick and choose and award, certain ones to certain people. So if you look in the resolution, although the title refers to large turf areas, they're actually for different scopes of work. The Scanlon is for landscaping, planting beds, hanging baskets, spring and fall cleanup, and Denofrio &amp; Son is strictly for certain large turf field areas. It's just basically based on scopes of work, broken.
Okay, okay. I got it. And my other question should be as simple as well. Are these new vendors, or are vendors that we've used in the past?
Scanlon, I know we've used in the past, Denofrio, I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, we have.
I think we've used both of them in the past.
Okay.
You should point out also that when we first went to this, the savings was about $200,000 a year.
Oh, yeah, it was a huge savings.
And the big fear was that we were just getting a low-bore bid the first year, and that we wind up paying more. But the savings, it's hard to figure, I don't know what the increases to the DPW were, but it's still obviously in excess of $150,000, may still be close to $200,000, so it's clearly worth it, because we haven't even come close to that threshold on the outside base.
Yeah, plus capital.
So this is the fourth year now of this?
I think so. Plus the capital equipment that goes along with it.
Yes, plus all the capital equipment, we haven't had to replace the fuel for the capital, whatever, which we needed to include in the savings the first time. So it's been very successful so far.
All right, thank you.
I want to make sure that, this question just arose in my mind when village administrators said Pat Scanlon's been used in the past. I want to make sure we're not hiring the same people who did the hanging baskets in the past?
No.
And Tommy's been working with Lisa Hackett, the director of the SID, to make certain that the hanging baskets are handled differently this year. So, I'm sorry. So I don't have, I mean, Barry may have more of an update on how we're going to be handling that.
Yeah, no, I think everybody, and I don't know definitively whether it was Scanlon or not, but everybody's very aware of the lack of success of the prior hanging basket program. So there's representation from the Village Center Alliance, Tommy Machete, I've been involved in meetings, trustee Gould was at one of the meetings, to look at, part of it relates to the coconut basket, they call it, in the particular container that the water drained out of it, which didn't retain the water in the soil. Part of it related to the plants that were selected, part of it related to the planting of these tiny plants at the beginning of the year, so they wouldn't actually mature until practically the end of the year. And now we're going to where they'll be grown in the greenhouse, and basically put on the lamppost relatively mature, and with a lot of light to them, so hopefully it'll be a market difference. That's the plan.
I hope so.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I just have one comment. We've changed the structure of our resolutions, where we indicate every one of the bids on the cover of the resolution itself. So we have the matrix available on the resolution.
Well, the matrix and the justification is in these, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I move.
Okay, move by trustee Davis Ford.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Levison. Could we have the roll, please?
Thank you. We'll start with trustee Gould.
Yes.
Trustee Levison.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Thank you. So the consent agenda has been approved.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Move.
Move by trustee Rosner, seconded by trustee Davis Ford. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? At this time, I would like to now call to order our conference agenda meeting. Let's take another roll.
Thank you, I'm still typing. Trustee Bauer?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Gould?
Here.
Trustee Levison?
Here.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
President Torpe?
Here.
Thank you. Notice, so this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Addition notice of this meeting has been posted in village hall on the village website, and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may now be taken at tonight's agenda meeting.
Thank you. A couple different things, so I'm going to start off with my report on the budget transparency front. Hopefully, by the end of this week, or possibly next week, we'll be launching a budget transparency tool provided by Delphi Solutions, and we'll have four, five years? Five years back of the village budget available in a tool that creates really easy-to-read tables and charts and graphs about the way spending has changed department by department. So it's got a lot of budget information that we'll announce and encourage everybody to look at when it's out there. But not only will the tool actually provide our own internal staff and department heads with a little bit of an easier tool to do some reporting and budgeting, and the tool itself hopefully will grow at some point where you can do some budget forecasting as well, but it will also provide an immense increase to the budget information that's available. People can kind of play with the numbers and really see what we've been doing for the past five years. So again, that should hopefully be in the next week or two, something we've been working on for a while with the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee as well. CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team, the folks that are responsible for helping staff our shelters during storms, they're growing, and they are having an information session, March 21st at 7:30 PM at the Baird Center. If anybody's interested, we got a lot of people who are interested from the Neighborhood Association meetings we had discussing Hurricane Sandy. And if anybody is interested in that, the course is about 20 hours. It's usually done on four different days, five hours a day, and you learn kind of some basic emergency preparedness skills, some fire safety stuff. They have a fire simulator, the fire department comes out, for example, on one of the days, and they light a fire in their training unit, and you get to use a fire extinguisher to put it out. It's always good to get some of those skills, just to be able to sort of protect yourself and your family during these kind of emergencies, and also be able to be there to volunteer for the town and help staff shelter, help us distribute information during a storm or emergency, and at some point, hopefully, staff a call center that will be able to provide community members with information during these emergencies.
So someone is going to make sure that they reach out to the people who express their interest?
Yeah, so we've been working on that. All the people who did sign up already either have gotten or will get an email reminding them of this date, and asking them, reminding them to fill out the survey on our website as well about Hurricane Sandy. But again, March 21st, 7:30 PM at Baird. If you have any questions, you can email me, or you can email southorangecert@gmail.com. So the storm recap progress, just basically got, just a couple days ago, all the information from our Neighborhood Association meetings compiled, so getting that together and being able to put that into the report that I'm going to be putting out. Unfortunately, it kind of ended up butting up against the state of the village, so I need to work on that for the next week. The report is almost done, and that will be out in the next couple weeks, and provide a lot of information about Hurricane Sandy, its impact on our community, our response, the reimbursements from the federal government, steps we're taking going forward, and basically anything that you could want to know about the event. So that'll be out in the next couple weeks, and that will be presented to the Board of Trustees, as there are some budgetary recommendations, long-term budgetary recommendations as well. So keep an eye out for that. The Public Information and Marketing Committee is meeting tomorrow night. We have some projects that we've sort of split people off into different work groups that I mentioned during the last time, and a couple of those have met. For example, some of the members have been a little bit more involved with our website redesign, which has been very helpful. And there are a couple other projects that are kind of ongoing, including creating a village Facebook page, and some other policies, like social media and internal email policies for the village. And so we're working on those projects, and again, meeting tomorrow night.
Can I ask you to consider something for this meeting?
Sure.
I attended yesterday, you were also, the community relations committee, is that what it's called? And one of the things that they hope for, wish for, is somewhere on a website or some sort of social media to be hosted, either individually or by the village, where different volunteer groups could collaborate together, and also post what's their activities they're doing, and there could be some synergy or economy of scale of collaboration with the different community groups doing things together that serve their mission or their goals. So in this, what's it, P Public Information?
The Marketing Committee.
Marketing Committee. If y'all could consider that when you're looking at redesigning the website, to have a space for our volunteer organizations.
Yeah, we'll definitely have that space available, and one of the other things that was very important to us when we were looking at the website was having a permissioning system that would allow people, so for example, you could have, if there's a section of the website that's run by CERT, for example, that they would be able to basically change the page, submit the edits, and it would go to Mr. Lewis and myself, and one of us would have to approve it, and then it would go live. So the idea is to actually give people a little bit of kind of editorial control over their section of the website, so they don't have to rely on us to update everything. There's, you know, crevices of our website that are very outdated, and if we can put that in the hands of the people that are actually doing it, so much is better, while still maintaining, you know, the kind of, you know, control that we need to do, you know, on a village-sponsored site. So that's definitely part of what we want to do, thank you. Social media and disaster response, I may have mentioned this in the last meeting, but I spoke at a panel a couple weeks ago about how social media is changing disaster response with a couple other folks, and there were a number of pretty interesting kind of ideas that were discussed, you know, in the hour-long discussion afterwards, and I'm not going to go through all of them here. But one of the things that's come up again and again, and I wanted to just give a quick update, is the, basically, redundancy, interoperability, standardization of how power outages are reported to utility companies. And so right now, I'm currently working with the Essex County Office of Emergency Management on creating sort of a cloud-based integrated data solution, basically a spreadsheet, that they could use to keep track of all the power outages in Essex County. And so we're moving that forward, probably going with Google Docs to start, and there are some tools built on top of that that allow you to visualize the data. So, for example, we collect information through the municipal office of emergency management, send those up to the county, and the county compiles one document of every power outage in the county. And what that allows us to do from a municipal perspective also is improve our workflow. So during these storms, you have public works, police, fire, and then staff here in village hall, all collecting information on what outages are happening. And everybody's got, you know, a different kind of database they're using, whether it's emails or handwritten notes. And what this will allow us to do is centralize all of that into one document. And it's going to reduce the kind of duplication of energy that people spend on collecting this information, and also provide some better county-wide situational awareness for Essex OEM. So it's something that we're kind of looking at, trying to figure out a way to do, and pretty excited about it, because at the end of the day, the interesting, kind of, one of the interesting lessons from Hurricane Sandy was, the number of, you know, PSCNG linesmen there were in New Jersey working was about 800. And there were a couple thousand out-of-state utility workers, I think they outnumbered in-state workers by four or five to one, using, you know, coming from a half a dozen different states. They're all using different ways of collecting outage information, different, you know, laptop, mobile data terminal systems, different variables they collect when they, you know, need the pole number or whatever it is. So if we can start to standardize some of that information, the same way that police and fire and EMS and OEM agencies across the country have started instituting things like the Incident Command System that allows standardization of language and data across different jurisdictions, so if one has to respond to another, you basically know what you're doing, you use the same terms, your code words are the same, and they're actually, you know, kind of phasing those out. But basically, you know, one agency can be dropped into another, and you can just get the work. Utility companies don't do that, they use, you know, pretty archaic systems that have no interoperability whatsoever, you know, enormously expensive, you know, proprietary software. So trying to open that up a little bit and create some standardization, because in the future, you know, we're going to keep seeing weather events like this, and they're going to require mutual aid responses from a dozen states. That's going to be the normal for these storms in the future, and right now, there just is no standardization or interoperability. So if we can start to pilot a program here, maybe it'll catch on at a higher level. I've spoken to Senator Lautenberg's office, you know, talking about these initiatives on a federal level, as well as Senator Coburn, who I think is the ranking member in the US Senate's Homeland Security Committee, about the national security implications of having a better way to collect outage information and actually get to work on restoring them in a timely fashion. So there seems to be a little bit of interest in it.
I'm just surprised that nothing like this really exists, especially after 9/11. I'm just amazed.
There's been a little bit of movement.
This is not hard technology or rock and science. I'm just amazed that we have this challenge of everybody being able to communicate, you know.
I mean, a lot of police and fire agencies are still working to get, you know, on the same systems, and that was, you know, one of the biggest lessons from September 11th. And yeah, I mean, you know, people aren't there yet, you know, the Incident Command System has, you know, basically taken hold, you know, across the country over the past decade or two. But, you know, there's many areas that haven't caught up with that, and utility infrastructure is one of them. So fortunately, Essex OEM has been really great about wanting to work on this, and wanting to kind of, you know, basically try to do anything to do a better job, a more efficient job, get this information, move from one place to another quicker. On a similar note, there's just two grants I wanted to mention, as far as emergency management goes. One is an Emergency Management Agency Assistance Grant, which helps recoup a small amount of staff cost, basically for your OEM coordinators. So if you're, so myself, I don't get a salary, but the police chief, fire chief, who do get a salary, basically taking a percentage of their time that's spent on responding to the storm, which is a, you know, a regional or a national disaster, and they recoup us some of those costs.
Does that grant come through FEMA?
Yeah, I mean, everything basically comes down through FEMA, to the state OEM, to the county OEM, to us. So all these are done through the Essex County OEM. And the other is a hazard mitigation grant, which we're going to be submitting shortly, that is going to help mitigate some of the concerns about sheltering in a flood zone that is going to help mitigate some of the concerns about sheltering in a flood zone where the Baird Center is, and also hopefully allow us to, or contribute to purchasing backup generator power for all of our municipal buildings. One last thing that I didn't have on here, but I did want to just kind of ask everybody about, is as far as the reports that I do, that Mr. Lewis, Mr. Rother do, and then each of the committees do during the conference agendas, would everybody be okay with submitting ahead of time the couple bullet points of things that you plan to discuss in your committee update? It's something that I try and do, I know we all try and do, some weeks they, you know, turn out better than others, but try and submit as much of that information ahead of time, you know, just a couple bullet points, you know, of whatever key points from your last committee meeting that you want to talk about, so that way, any member of the public who's looking at the agenda can say, okay, well, this committee is discussing, you know, X, Y, and Z, so I do want to go to the meeting and, you know, and hear about it, or they don't want to go because they don't really care. You know, just one more way to make what we're talking about in the meeting a little bit more transparent. Is that something that everybody's okay with doing?
Okay.
So just, you know, before each conference agenda meeting, just, you know, the same way you submit regular agenda item requests, that same form, just same thing, just bullet out, you know, the lists of things that you plan to talk about. And again, you know, it's, obviously, if you end up not talking about something, no big deal, or you're talking about something else, that's fine, but, you know, just to try and provide a little bit more information. Ms. Lewis?
Yeah, I did submit a report, I'm not going to reread the entire report, and plus a number of those sort of overlap with some of the standing committees, and I didn't want to upstage any of the committees and steal all your thunder, so for those things, I'll maybe just weigh in if the particular trustee reporting on the committee report, if there's something I think was overlooked, I'll weigh in. I would like to join Robin in welcoming Chanel. Today was her first day, she had an eventful day, but we're excited to have her here. I know Robin's excited to get back to full staffing and we're, we think Chanel's going to be a great fit for the village. On those note, the next important vacancy we have to fill is Deputy Village Administrator spot. I'm sure Trustee Davis Ford will speak to that a little more in her personnel report, but we're proceeding in that process really nicely and have identified some good candidates, and we're optimistic of getting someone there. Also, as noted in my report, the former BIFIS site, South Orange Commons, now the project's officially going to be called The Gateway. We anticipate, and the developer is in the process of scheduling a groundbreaking, we'll keep you posted. I think at this point, it will be after our next meeting, but it might be like that Friday, so I want to give everyone's a heads up. As soon as he pins down a date, we will certainly, he wants to invite all the trustees, but that'll be.
That's the old BIFIS.
Yeah, and that's going to be an exciting development to finally see that fence come down and see the ground broken there. Touched upon and Trustee Levison may mention as well, but our capital program, we do anticipate having an early capital ordinance for our next meeting. I've been in touch with Bond Counsel, worked with the engineer, we have identified the projects that would be ready and need to have that funding available, and gotten the engineer's estimates and getting that information to Bond Counsel. In addition, some of the last year's road projects, Terrell and Thornden is one that we're going to be adding some additional roads, Kingsland Court, Kingsland Terrace, Rinda, and Ridgewood. So we're going to include that funding in the early ones, so we can roll that into one project, because they're all sort of contiguous, and we think we'll get a better value by bidding as a larger project.
And while you're talking about roads, the other roads which are not on the list to be repaved or redone, but have pothole problems, just want to clarify, those will be addressed after the, within the next month or so?
Yeah, hopefully now that the weather's improving and it's warmer and the asphalt plants are open and stuff, I'm sure Mr. Machete's on top of that, but certainly, we would encourage any resident that is aware of one, you know, that's that many more eyes out on the street, to let us know and report it, and hopefully soon enough, we'll have our 3-1-1 system in place that you can just electronically file it, but until that, do it the old-fashioned way and either call or email us, and we'll, I'm sure they'll get out there and get them corrected. And then lastly, the only other thing I wanted to mention is, I've been working closely with my assistant compiling as much and sorting out what we can about grants and open and pen, as you recall from due to a resignation at the end of the year, the individual largely responsible for that isn't with us, so we've been compiling all our existing grants, past grants, open grants, prospective grants, grant applications. I'm going to be putting together a, as comprehensive a spreadsheet and report as I can, I will circulate it to everybody. I've already got a couple of meetings scheduled with Trustee Bauer to try and tap into her wealth of knowledge and experience in a lot of these areas, but certainly would also welcome input from any other trustee. You will see, there are some that I'm still, we're still trying to track down, there's a 2007 flood mitigation grant that I'm still trying to find anybody that knows anything about, but, so look for that, and then again, whether it's the email or to sit down and talk, I'd be happy and would welcome the opportunity to touch base with anybody that has any knowledge or can shed any light on any of the question marks that I raise. And beyond that, I'll just either respond to questions and/or weigh in.
Okay, give us a status report on the renovation project for Village Hall.
Well, briefly, we had hoped to have a presentation tonight, but Shapiro, our construction manager, was, had a commitment in Puerto Rico or something, so I think we're going to try and line them up for the 27th, so I'd get into a more extended report there. In a nutshell, we are actively looking at interim office sites. We have awarded the contract in the professionally engineered Hashmont McDonald has been given the green light to move forward on preparing the asbestos abatement bidding documents and specifications, that's the first step in the process. When they complete that, we'll go out to bid for that contractor, award that contract, and by that time then, we need to be out of the building because they can't pay until we're out. At the same time, the architect is moving forward, the 50% design drawings were completed, the cost estimator came back with the initial take, we reviewed that, reviewed that with the construction manager who raised a number of questions. So there's dialogue back and forth, but hopefully by that meeting on the 27th, we'll be in a position to have sort of a revamped schedule, as well as some budgetary information on the overall project.
So we're probably, most likely, and this is being aggressive, won't be able to relocate out of this building until probably June?
I think June is probably the target month, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, based on our original schedule, we're already six months behind.
Well, that was an original, I don't know, yes, I guess, I wasn't part of that original schedule.
No, you weren't, no.
And I, candidly, I think that some of the original projections, both scheduling and budget-wise, were, in my opinion, way too premature in the process and not at a point where enough information had developed specifically through the professionals doing their job to where you should really have been issuing either budgetary projections or timelines.
And Third and Valley, do you have any updates on that?
The process is moving forward, we're presently, I think they're finalizing the financial agreement and anticipate having that on the agenda for the next meeting, which would include, you know, all the terms of the transaction, including the pilot, contributions for the rescue squad, sale price, parking, et cetera. So that's moving forward. They have been and met with the planning board engineer, which is also the village engineer, and the board secretary, and for all the processes on the planning board application, they're in the process of sort of finalizing that. I would expect them to be filing at least for completeness review with the planning board within the next month or two, and hope to get on the agenda. They are still pretty confident and looking, hopefully, at a target to where they may be breaking ground in November, so that's an exciting development as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Rother?
Yes, my report is going to be directed at the four major pieces of litigation that my firm is handling for the village. The first of those is the Occidental or Presaic River litigation, which the trustees have addressed earlier this evening by way of a resolution authorizing a settlement. That settlement is going to be subject to a fairness hearing in the Superior Court, which is anticipated will be finalized probably much later this year, probably sometime in the fall. The next case is the NexG case, that is these small antenna that a company wants to put on various utility poles. In that litigation, discovery is continuing, and there's not much in addition that I can report there. The Lauren Hill litigation, we have filed for, and we have also filed for a motion for judgment, which is returnable this month on the 22nd. The defendant has not filed responsive papers yet and probably will not. As the landlord in that matter, and we have an agreement with the landlord that they need not file an answer as long as they take prompt action to evict Ms. Hill since her lease has expired, and in fact, we now have seen papers filed whereby the landlord is seeking possession of the premises. East Orange Water, that matter is continuing before the special master, and we're making progress in getting engineered solutions both on an interim basis, and interim means a temporary engineered solution that is going to be approved by DEP, while they also work on a more permanent solution, one which is going to be an engineered solution addressing all of the wells at the finishing plant by way of an air stripper. And we should announce to the public that on the 19th at 7:30 here in Village Hall, DEP is going to appear for a town meeting to answer any questions that residents have with regard to water quality and the health aspects of consuming the water from our faucets here in town. There's been a lot of misinformation that has been put out on email, et cetera, and it's important that our residents get the real solid information with regard to the quality of our water and the health aspects in consuming it, so everyone is invited to come here on the 19th at 7:30.
Yeah, and we'll also make sure to record that meeting as we did the last one when we did this, and we'll have the video online for those who can't make it as well. Thank you.
President Torpey, I will go ahead and do a legal notice for that meeting, I would imagine the full board would like to be present at that meeting.
There's no action going to be taken at that meeting, so.
I'll advertise it as such, but just so we give our governing body an opportunity if they want to have discussions.
Thank you. Trustee Levison?
Yeah, I have a number of items and some discussion on a couple of them. We had a meeting last Tuesday evening, the focus of that meeting was our capital budget, but there are a couple items before that. We have just released a RFP for gas purchase. We have previously had an RFP for electric purchase, which we've had a 47% reduction in our costs for electric, saving us about $75,000 a year. That's going out again for bid very shortly. We should have the same expectation of savings associated to our electric costs. With our gas purchase, it should, it won't reach the same kind of level, but we should have some additional savings in our gas consumption, cost for the gas consumption. In the budget, or the capital budget review, we took a number of looks at, one, previous capital items that we have, which we haven't initiated, the other being grants, which Barry just went through, and I'll go through a couple of them because they are indicative of some of the projects which we like to move forward with this year. Specifically, we're looking as a project to improve the DPEW yard, which would include demolition of the pump house. We're looking to repair the bridge that goes across the river next to the pump house, at least that that's temporary until the river corridor solution comes into play, but we want to make sure that it is usable for the public, and if we have to do some basic repairs, that we can do the basic repairs. The other part of the yard improvements would be to repave it, both the roadway as well as the recycling area. That, in addition, what we're looking for in every one of these things, if we could apply for grants, and we've actually had a consultant who, Winning Strategies, who has gone over a bunch of the initiatives that we're looking at for this year, and will come back to us with potential area for a grant availability. The other one, the other project is the Second Street parking lot, since we're not going to be using it for the trailers, we have on, or have had on the agenda for some time, fixing that particular property. There are monies, one in grants, as well as some capital item, line items that from previous years that we could use for the parking lot. The Taylor Place lot was another item that we had in the budget. We're looking at taking some of the monies that were associated to the Taylor Place lot, reducing the total concept that we had for fixing that lot, and using the remaining monies for the Second Street lot. Additionally, we're looking at using, or some of the previous grant money, or project that we have, is space planning in our PD headquarters, so that we can now utilize the space, one, the space evacuated by the court, and a reorganization of space planning within the police department, so that we can have better utilization of that building. Bad improvements, we have a number of funds which have been left over, and as well as looking at grants for fixing Baird, one being the roof, the other one is to fix the front entrance or the ramp that's associated to the front entrance. Both of these have been outstanding projects, what we want to do is now move ahead with them by combinations of grant money, as well as, and again, this is another topic to discuss, is open space trust fund monies. And lastly, the duck pond repairs, what we'd like to do is to refurbish the skate house and fix the retaining wall around the duck pond, and including cleaning out of the duck pond, which is something that has been on the agenda for some time, and as well as looking at that as a open space trust fund monies. Some of the grants that we've had, and which Barry referred to before, that have outstanding funds, such as Clean Communities, Trustee Rosner has recommended buying another Big Belly container that we could use to move around into various park areas, such as the pool or into the waterlands, when those particular areas are being highly utilized. The other is that the funds can be available to other organizations within the village, such as the Environmental Commission, for certain projects, we're looking to use some of the funds for River Day event. We have monies that are sitting in Stormwater Grant, which can be rolled into the duck pond repair, and we have Recycling Tonnage Grant, which as well can be used for the repaving or the demolition project for the pump house. From the 2012 capital budget, we have a number of items that, one in particular being the streets, and what we're trying to do is to combine Forden, which was in the budget last year, with new items in the budget, so that we could bring them together into one bid document, which includes Rinda, Kingsland Terrace, and Kingsland Circle, Circle or Court?
Court.
Court. And a portion of South Ridgewood, from South Orange Avenue to the Maplewood border. Those will all be combined together as one large project. Hopefully, that will be part of the next meeting's capital ordinance. And then we have a number of items which are short-term in the IT area, or CAT RMS, or computer aided dispatch, and records management system for the police department will be included, as well as some other communication items, which are immediate needs.
Let me just, you know, point out, the communication items in the CAT system were all discussed in the ICMA report.
Right.
And we were following up, that was our part of the, the ICMA report was split among different committees and as well as the administrator, and that was, so all the recommendations that were from the ICMA report were reviewed and a couple of them were being, will be implemented, including the CAT system.
Thank you. The other is that we are looking at implementing cameras throughout the village, this is part of our communication initiative, and one other component being voice-over IP. As we move out of here, we're looking to replace the current wired PBX telephone system with a voice-over IP communication, where we have great flexibility, and hopefully that will become standard across all of the various departments within the village. And lastly, something that I think we could discuss right now, there was a question about having laptops for all of the trustees, and what kind of laptop that we should be purchasing or if purchased at all. There was a discussion between having things like an iPad versus something like a laptop, and one of the questions that was raised, would the trustees actually be taking these devices home, or do we want to basically have them sitting at the podium, so that instead of having... instead of having pieces of paper in front of us, we could have a laptop sitting in front of us? Part of it is that the laptops are available right now from Seton Hall. Seton Hall gives us a number of laptops, which we could implement, or we can go into things like iPads as personal assistants.
Although I said, you know, iPads, if they don't have the USB, I wouldn't use them, but I think if we could get the laptops for free, and I feel that it wouldn't just be for these, it would be for all past minutes.
Right.
All past agendas, if we have them at our access at the computer, at the laptop, if it were to be preloaded with that, and free, and I didn't have any rejection to anyone bringing it home, if they felt they had to use it for, you know, for village business, or just have it in the podium, depending on the person. But free is hard to beat, and it seems like it's fairly reasonable, and we could probably get them upgraded every couple of years.
Mm-hmm.
As well. And so I would vote for the free laptops as there, and I wouldn't worry about whether they're taken home or not.
Yeah, I think the idea of people bringing them home is a good one. I mean, if they were here, we meet twice a month, you know, most of the time they were, you know, they'd be basically not being used. And if, you know, each one was, you know, preloaded with the information, like Trustee Rosner said, you know, quick access to your email, agendas, minutes, everything like that, you know, that would certainly be nice. And, you know, just from an Oprah perspective, you know, people who want to do, you know, work on things, and they want to use a, you know, a municipality-owned laptop to do that, you know, you're just creating a little bit of a safer space for you.
Right.
And, yeah.
Especially for us at work, we're not supposed to do any village business on the, any business, other than my business, business at the work, because the computer is actually owned by the company, not by me, so.
And I think at the end of the day, too, you know, I mean, we don't compensate ourselves, although I hope at some point that would change for future versions of us. But at the very least, you know, the amount of expense that is assumed, that someone is able to outlay to be an elected official, I think is, you know, kind of a barrier of entry for people, you know, that are of a lower economic status, you know. So if you want to work on a, you know, to be, you know, a good elected official, I think you have to be able to, you know, answer your email on a daily basis, and be able to keep up with all that, and be able to have electronic access to all these things. But, you know, if you don't have access to those things, then what are you supposed to do? And, you know, if we did get a stipend of some sort, you know, you could use that to purchase something, but we don't. So if there's something that's required, you know, of us to really do our job properly, and especially if we can get it at a reduced cost for free, we should certainly be able to provide that, so people don't have to buy it themselves.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah, to me it is, yeah.
Yeah, it's whatever, whatever the majority decides which way to go, I'm fine.
That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Davis-Ford?
After Trustee Levinson's detailed and comprehensive report, I'm going to keep mine short. We had a meeting...
Here's her first.
On the 25th, and you all have received minutes of the meeting, so I won't regurgitate that for you, but I'm only going to talk about one item from the meeting, and that I'm very happy about. One of the major things that we wanted to accomplish in the last several months was to identify and bring on key personnel to the village, and we have succeeded with that, with our new deputy clerk, and, how long has it been for you, Barry?
What's that?
How long have you been here?
A little over a year.
A little over a year?
Yeah.
And so that's another critical, and then, and now we're, we're in, we created, when an opening happened in the administrative area, we created a deputy administrative position, and we are now at the process where we're, the team that, or committee that was put together as part of the review and selection process. We received, I believe, almost 80 resumes for this position, and the committee, all individually reviewed the resumes, and we had a meeting to come to a consensus of reducing those 85 resumes to five candidates on paper who we believe were qualified for the position based on the job description that was developed. And those interviews are going to be held this week, Tuesday and Thursday. At the end of that, we hope to be able to collaborate and identify a final candidate, and once that final candidate is identified, that candidate will be presented to the board, and the board will then vote, vote for or against that candidate. And that, again, is a deputy administrator to assist our administrator and better help the village as a whole, better serve our residents. And so that's all. And the rest of everything we discussed, and that's critical, are in the minutes.
What time is the meeting on the 25th?
The 25th?
Yes.
If I can just interject, Trustee Davis-Ford, you had asked me on Friday to take a poll of the legal committee, because the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees has been moved to Wednesday, March 27th. So the legal committee would not be meeting on that Monday night. So we still need to address what our rescheduled date will be.
And be available, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And so I'll revisit that again, Trustee Bauer, with yourself, and Trustee Levinson.
Yeah, I asked her to reach out. I'm sorry.
President Torpey.
No, it's fine, because I, the last time I just saw the exchange of emails saying, "I'm not available yet, I'm not available yet," so I figured I must have missed one.
No, you haven't.
Okay.
And I believe that Monday afternoon has also been taken off the table now.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so then we'll have to find another date.
Yeah.
I just can't do Wednesday because of my other obligations. So whatever mutual date we can get to is when we'll get that date.
Yeah.
Now I understand.
I'll do a doodle.
Okay. And that's all I'm going to report, unless Counselor, you have anything you'd like to add?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you. Trustee Rosner?
Planning and Zoning Committee, we'll be meeting again on March 20th, not March 3rd, as it says on the thing.
Thank you.
On March 20th. We did meet with a member of the South Orange Village Alliance, myself, and Trustee Gold. Most of it go over ordinances that they found that may, that the business owners may have had complaints about, perceived complaints about, or that they think we should have, or that they want to see, and so forth. So he, we met, had a discussion, and he's going to come back to the Planning and Zoning Committee. Because it was a night, I forgot to send out an agenda, the village staff didn't show up, so March 20th will have a full Planning and Zoning Committee meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public Safety Committee, does anybody know if that...
We did, we did meet, but I think I'm going to wait till Michael comes back, and he can report on the meeting.
And is this accurate, the next meeting, the 26th? Anybody know?
I don't know that.
That would be a Tuesday night, or the night after Passover, so that sounds right.
No, it actually does not sound right to me.
Public Works, Trustee Bauer?
Public Works did not meet last month, and I guess I'll take a poll, even though Trustee Goldberg isn't here. Can Trustee Levinson meet on March 27th, if we meet in advance of the meeting, or would there be a conflict? Because we could meet at 6:30 or 6:45.
Yeah, I think that's all right.
Okay, so if he can do it, we'll do it, and we may go ahead and do it anyway, because we've had a lot of difficulty getting Tom, Sal, and the three of us together. I did want to respond to an item that came up in Mr. Lewis's monthly update, and that is immediately after the ICMA report, the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee did meet to discuss the items...
Janie, can you go closer to the mic? He's lighting you.
Yeah. I can't really pick that up anymore. Thank you. The Public Works and Infrastructure Committee did meet immediately after the delivery of the ICMA report, to go over the items in it, and we were frankly perplexed by the wide variability of the infrastructure items in it at the time that the ICMA report was delivered to us, and, I mean, delivered to us collectively, and then assigned to the various committees. I don't think I had really focused on that aspect of the report, so in the interim, we all focused on it. I don't have the minutes that Sal took for that particular meeting, so I'm not going to be able to recite exactly what we came, you know, because I just read your update and saw that you were reminding us. But there was a wide variability of items that ranged from, you know, if I recall correctly, fixing the toilet paper roll, and things like that, I mean, things that I just couldn't believe that the village, that would make it even into the ICMA report, that the village did not have a person either from the police department, or from Public Works, or just on staff generally, that would fix these incredibly minor, what I would describe as handyman issues, to issues that are endemic to the building itself, everything from, you know, the use of the firing range, dampness, flooding, and so on and so forth, which Public Works is not going to address as a committee, those are going to be questions. So what happened at that meeting, aside from the fact that Tommy agreed to get the handyman things fixed, or to just to talk to the chief, because frankly, I was just embarrassed to even have things like that in the report, you know, but also, it kind of launched into what I find is the age-old conversation in South Orange, and that is, the engineer's office believes, and many of us believe, that we are not taking as good care, for a variety of reasons, money being one of them, and resources being the other, of our historic buildings, or even our nonhistoric buildings, and things tend to fall apart if you defer maintenance. And there's advocacy on the part of the engineer's office to hire somebody who had, or hire more than one person who has these skills on staff, so they're readily available, so we don't have to go through bidding out, which we don't have to necessarily bid out, you know, every time you hire a carpenter or something like that. But anyway, there's, there's a process, and that process apparently is frustrating. As opposed to Tom Machetti's reaction to that, and, you know, other, certainly the prior administrators' reaction to that, is, you know, we don't, we can't identify the skill set to bring a person like that on board. We'd have to bring several people on board if we wanted to do that, and so on and so forth. So, so there just seems like there's an impasse about these things, which contributes to a deferral of maintenance. I don't have a, you know, my view of this matter is kind of 30,000-foot, because I'm not the person, you know, on the ground in the building when something breaks, and I assume, you know, somebody gets called, you get called, Tommy gets called, or maybe nobody gets called, and everybody gets frustrated. But my sense was, there was nothing else for the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee to do. But now that I have your report, I will definitely look back on those things, and we will reschedule them for the next meeting, to make sure that the little items were taken care of, or will be taken care of, and the bigger items, to the extent that they are relatively immediately resolvable, at least come to this board to figure it out. I did mention that it was my view that we shouldn't put a lot of money into the police department, because I didn't think it was a building that, I thought that, quite frankly, we could do better by our police, and that it was not a building that we should be putting any major money into. But of course, we have to fix anything that was considered to be health and safety, dampness, and, you know, reorganization, make use of the court space, and so on and so forth. But I didn't see it as a village goal to spend a lot of money refurbishing that building. I feel like we would rather build, move somewhere else, develop the lot. It's a very valuable lot, and it certainly could be, or is zoned for residential, multifamily, and so forth. So that's the, that's the upshot of the major conversation that we had at the, at that, not the last, but probably the next-to-last Public Works and Infrastructure Committee.
Just a brief follow-up, and I, too, was surprised at the level of some of the items that were both in the report, and also, I think, brought to our attention by the PBA. Most of the minor stuff, hopefully, has by now been corrected and fixed. We did get a handyman out there. On the larger question, and I've been exploring this, having the same conversation with the engineer and Public Works Director, over what historically had been almost like a Buildings and Grounds-type component of the Public Works, that included, I guess, a couple of people that had, were charged almost with year-round responsibility for the facilities, and somewhere along the way, that whole division or whatever got eliminated. I don't know if the thinking was, you could do better by outsourcing, but I guess then ultimately, you could do better by not sourcing at all, and not even doing it. But ultimately, that catches up to you. So we're in the midst of reevaluating that, and trying to strike the right balance. Clearly, we're not going to hire a licensed, you know, electrician plumber and everything else, but there certainly is a scope that I think that dedicating one or two people with enough of a handyman-type skill set can address a lot of these issues, and rather than let them just sort of get neglected the way it appeared to have been.
I think that would be a big improvement, and I personally think it would be well worth the village as well. But I understand Tom's frustration with, you know, if he's going to have a person or two additional, he wants to put them somewhere else. So I get the whole picture, but that's...
We've all advocated for them to have a handyman carpenter person in DPW. Their argument has always been, they couldn't find that one person who could do it, which we always felt that was ridiculous. Not only could you find somebody, because we will find someone to fix our house who has multiple talents, and you find people who can do plumbing work, electrical work, or carpentry work, and usually do a decent job at all those things. I also felt that several of the people who already worked for the village have those skills already, but because of the union titles, don't want to do work that's not assigned to them, or so forth. But I think that we need to create another category for those, to have a handyman carpenter fit in there who can do these kind of odd jobs. And obviously, we don't want it to do a major plumbing repair, but to do minor plumbing repairs, minor electrical repairs, I don't think it's really that difficult to find that person, and...
So why don't we have an actionable?
We've had action before.
No, a job, a defined job description.
We've done that.
We've done that. It's village staff, and that worked before Barry, it was John Glose who didn't execute it.
But this sounds ridiculous, that we've done that, and you can't find it there. There are a lot of people who have that skill set, so why don't we, why don't we do it again?
Don't talk to him, talk to him, if you're looking the wrong person. It's not up to me to do it, it's up to him.
One of the questions, and maybe Steve, you can answer it, if there are electrical work or plumbing work to be done, do they have to be licensed?
Depends on the work.
I think that was one of the other stumbling...
It was always, it was always the argument, but it had to be licensed this, licensed that, but we, some staff we had turned out, happened to have licensed electrical work, but it's more of a union contract negotiation issue than it is about finding those people.
I think it actually has much more to do with building maintenance than it does a specific trade that's licensed and has a professional regulatory...
It's like changing a light switch.
It's not so much a plumbing and electrician, it's, it's building maintenance. That's one of the reasons I described it as more like carpentry and so forth.
But one of the questions that was raised was like changing the light switches, that we wanted to put on proximity switches.
Right.
And it came back that you required a licensed electrician to do it. And I don't believe it.
But that's one aspect, but there's so many other stuff.
No, I don't either. I don't either.
I don't believe it, but...
You've got to put an electric service in a building, yeah, you need a licensed electrician, but, but changing the switch, no.
I don't know.
All right, so why don't we have, we can go back and forth with this all night. So what's the actionable?
We're going to ask Barry to come back in a month and give us a recommendation.
Okay, all right.
I thought it was a good call, Matt.
Trustee Gold?
We did not meet the February Rec Committee. I had a conflict, and Trustee Rosner had a really good conflict. His granddaughter was born that day. Congratulations.
Oh, congratulations, Grandpa. She's beautiful, by the way.
Thank you.
So we did not meet, but we will meet, there'll be no further grandchildren on the 28th of March, and we'll meet on the 28th of March.
Why don't you share with all of us, what's her name, her first name?
Eloise Jane Friedman.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Eloise Jane Friedman.
And how much did she weigh?
Eight pounds, three ounces.
And how long was she?
19.5 inches.
Oh, he's good. All right.
All right, we'll keep the grandpa jokes, if you want to.
And 12 days old today.
Oh, wow.
But no one's counting.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the meeting, if there are any other comments for any members.
Well, I just had a couple of questions.
Yep, just hold on a second.
Okay.
There's nobody who wishes to speak, is there, or anything? I don't know if we have any discussion items on tonight, we don't?
No, just real quick, the duck pond, I was, in that area, I've seen more geese on the duck pond and on the lawn that I have seen in the, and I'm telling you, I've never seen such crapping machines. They, they are late, so much crap.
If only I could.
What are we doing about getting rid of the geese?
We'll check in with John Festa, see, see what's going on.
Didn't we have a big discussion at the House of Representatives?
I thought the board helped make a decision.
Yeah.
Do you know?
Be careful.
They made a decision that was rescinded.
You mean they made a decision that was rescinded recently?
I don't know. I just, at this point.
I don't think the decision's been made, but it's certainly being revisited.
I'll, I'll report on it at the next meeting. From Public Works. We worked on this very long, like a year and a half now.
The truth of the matter is that this needs to be done jointly in other towns and stuff. You cannot just do South Orange, you need South Orange, Maplewood, West Orange, Montclair.
But you wanted to go to.
But really, I've never seen so many.
It's much worse since the winters, the last winters have been warmer.
Some of the repairs that we're proposing for around the pond mitigate them, but I don't think it's going to happen.
We've kind of decided that they really don't.
Yeah. We actually thought maybe Jody's deer hunters could expand. Duck hunt?
No, four of them.
That's the only solution.
I'm not touching that one.
We could, we could bring Dick Cheney in here. Just don't go with them.
Yeah, exactly.
We will have some.
We don't know, we might shoot them if they harass some people.
All right, and the other, real quick thing is the Village Center Alliance, I would like to, you know, how long have they been up and running now?
Let's try to get them in for a update.
Yes.
At not this next meeting, but the following conference agenda, would that be good?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, let me, uh.
Yeah, why don't we mark them down for that?
Let me tell them.
And if you want to reach out.
I'll do it, or Robin, do you want to reach out to him?
Either or.
Okay. And what's the date of that?
27th.
The conference agenda.
Oh, April.
April 1st, April.
Eight.
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 All right, I had actually mentioned to them that they should come by, so let's just give the date now.
Yeah, I think it's time. That would be great. That's it for me.
Okay, is there anything else?
Correct.
Okay.
Move.
Oh, you don't have?
When do we all have to?
No, I don't think you have to.
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all favor.
I don't think you need to.
No, not really, but.
Okay.
Adjourn. Thank you.